Yeah, good, can hear you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission, Tuesday, December 5. If you'll be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and the call to order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation of God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Carter?
Here.
Chair Friend?
Here.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Here.
Commissioner Lepper?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Commissioner Smith advised us he would not be here this evening. Advised me, anyway, I'm sorry. Item three, closed session report, we have none. Item four, adoption of the agenda. Chair will entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Motion to adopt.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carried. Item five, consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and acted by general consent unless any commissioner requests a roll call vote or a member of the commission or staff or audience wishes to remove. An item for discussion, under consent, we have the minutes, and I have one minor correction to the minutes. I think you probably already know what that is, or maybe not. At the very end, I believe it shows that the meeting was adjourned by Vice Chair Keeney. I think I was here. And I don't recall what time we adjourned, but you must have it in your records somewhere.
I believe the time is correct, but...
Okay, great, super. All right. Any other commissioners have any other additions or corrections? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt as amended.
I will second.
In favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, that takes care of item six as well. Item seven, items of interest to the public. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on items not before us on the agenda this evening and which are within the purview of the commission. Please be advised that the chair has the right to limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone in the audience wish to address the commission on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on then to item eight, written communications on agenda items. Do we have any communications?
We do not.
Thank you. Item nine, presentations and educational workshops. I don't believe we have any this evening. Okay, great. Item 10, environmental assessments and public hearings. Item 10.1, this is a temporary mobile home. Consideration of a temporary mobile home application within the single-family residential zone for placement of a manufactured home to be used as temporary living quarters during construction of the primary residence and to define the project categorically exempt from the environmental SEQA report. And I believe, Kristin, you have the staff report. And before we move, I will disclose that the applicants are friends of mine and we have not discussed the project. Thank you.
All right. So TMH 23-01 is a request to install a manufactured home on the subject parcel to be used as temporary living quarters while construction is completed on the primary dwelling. The subject parcel currently has two structures, a single-family dwelling constructed in 1979 and an accessory shop. The Development Services Department issued building permit 22361 for the reconstruction of the single-family dwelling in 2022. This application follows this permit and would provide temporary housing for the property owners while construction is ongoing. Zoning ordinance section 10-4-6 titled Temporary Mobile Home or Commercial Coach Use Permit authorizes the planning commission to permit temporary uses that meet safety standards where the need for the use has been demonstrated and where such use will not adversely affect existing land uses. Section 10-4-6 applies to the placement of a temporary mobile home that is accessory to the principal use and is temporary in nature. It is the opinion of staff that the placement of a temporary manufactured home on the subject parcel to provide temporary housing during construction complies with the requirements of section 10-4-6. Of note, TMH permits may be granted for a period of up to one year. As such, the applicant is responsible for requesting an extension prior to the expiration, which, if approved tonight, would be December 5, 2024. The request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA guidelines section 15303 in that the project involves placement of a temporary structure accessory to the principal single-family use. Further, the project request is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of zoning ordinance section 10-4-6, as mentioned previously, as well as sections 10-5-5, Single Family Acre Residential, and 10-5-23 Airport Overlay. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of TMH 23-1, and conditionally approve TMH 23-1 located at 3168 Airport Road, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report. This concludes staff's report on TMH 23-1.
Thank you for that. Questions of staff by commissioners? Commissioner Keeney?
Thank you. Thank you for the report, Kristin. My only question about the temporary mobile home permit is who or which division of the city would be in charge of monitoring and making sure that it meets sanitation requirements? Would there be any kind of inspection once the temporary mobile home is in place or, you know, for the year that it's there on the property?
The installation of the temporary mobile home will be subject to a building permit, so full inspections will take place during the installation to ensure appropriate water connection, sewer connection, and power.
So that, just like the rest of the project, is subject to inspection by the building part?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I had two questions. I think you already answered one, but I was trying to follow along, didn't catch it. So going to attachment one, conditions number two. The temporary manufactured home may be placed on the subject property for a period of one year from the date of its approved occupancy. Is that today? That's what you said, I think. That'd be December 5? Is that today's date?
Yes.
Is that what that means, Kristin? From the date of its approved occupancy?
Approved occupancy would be following building permit finalization, so they would be issued an occupancy.
Ah, okay. So they have one year from that point?
Correct.
And then it says shall not be placed on the subject property until after the permit for the new primary residence. That didn't make, that didn't, so the manufactured home is considered a new primary residence? I didn't understand what that sentence meant.
Yeah.
I believe the intent of that is the applicant will have to pull the permit, so they're going to submit their plan check and then pull the permit for construction of the new home.
Okay.
Prior to installation and inhabiting the temporary mobile home.
So they can pull the permit for the temporary home and then pull the permit for the new home, or is one condition on the other? Because it seems that they can't have the temporary home until they have the, and this is a city administrative issue, not so much an applicant. I'm just trying to understand the mechanics involved here. What has to happen, what's the sequence of what has to happen and how?
Well, the sequence is they'll be submitting then two permits. They'll be submitting their permit for the demolition and construction of the new home, and then they'll submitting the permit for the installation of the temporary mobile home. Because we don't want a situation where we just have a temporary mobile home and nothing is happening on the...
Well, right, correct. That's kind of what I was asking, so...
Does that make sense, Chair Friend?
Clear enough. Okay, no other questions? Any other questions? All right, great. This is a public hearing, so we'll invite the applicant or their agent to address the commission if they feel the need to do so. I know that they're in the audience.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Friend.
You're welcome.
And other commissioners and staff. Just to let you know, we submitted for the permit to rebuild almost a year ago. The permit's ready to issue. We're just trying to line everything up so that when we do start the full demolition on our house, we've already started on the garage with the demo permit that was issued a year ago, that we do have a place to stay. We will be securing our permit for the home within the next couple of weeks. We're hoping for the approval of the temporary home so that we can get that placed, get it set up, get it permitted and inspected. And when we're ready to complete the final demo on the house, we're hoping early spring, that we'll have a place to move into. Thank you.
Super. Any other, any questions of the applicant?
My only question was going to be if the year timeline sounds reasonable for the project intentions.
It is reasonable based on city ordinance. We do understand that, you know, laws and ordinances, I do enforce them for the county. The project will probably take three years, so my only question would be to city staff is are we able to renew the use of the mobile home as long as we have an active construction permit and are diligently pursuing it with inspections to show the progress? We're estimating three years.
Yes, the applicant will be able to apply for an extension and is written in the condition of approval per the ordinance. It would be at the commission's discretion to extend it a year or more, depending upon the circumstances of the applicant.
Thank you for that clarification, because that was my, how you described is my exact question, is just to make sure it's not an open end, that there's a consistent move forward progress and that that sounds reasonable and realistic for you.
Thank you. And the reality is, is that we have adopted our three grandkids a few years ago. We're going to be living, as the staff report says, a 14 by 55 square foot single wide with five of us and a dog. So realistically, three years is the outside, or, well, we're not going to mention what may happen if it takes longer. Thank you.
Thank you.
So don't leave in case there are other questions. But I could think we could say that the incentives are appropriately aligned for a rapid conclusion of the project.
Sir?
And I can think of Marshall Hospital just being one example, where we have extended multiple times with demonstration by the applicant that they are moving diligently.
That was my primary question.
Any other questions of the applicant, by any commissioner? All right, thank you very much. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this project? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action.
I just had a quick correction to the staff report, just on page two in project description. The copy I got, I think there was a placeholder there to include the make-model year of the manufactured home.
That showed up, but that showed up later on attachment one.
I understand, but since we're making the staff report part of the public record, that item should reflect the proper information for the mobile home. Other than that...
Which would be the 1972 Kaufman and Broad Predica model?
Precisely.
Okay.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that got into the staff report.
We'll cut you off.
Thank you very much.
Other discussion?
I had just one question, and I don't, I didn't go in depth on the ordinance around the mobile home on a property, but would it be an option for them to use that as an ADU down the line, or is that not acceptable?
ADUs can be used as an, sorry, a manufactured home may be used as an ADU.
And so the reason I ask that is that I'm wondering in the placement and things like that, if, say they place it there and then they decide they want to keep it and they want to go through the ADU process of getting it approved and everything, I just wonder if that would go into their consideration of where in the property they place it. I don't know if that's of interest to you, but, okay, yeah, that's fine, no problem. It's kind of more for my edification, too, yeah. Goner, okay, I get it, yeah. No, my in-laws have one on their property way out, and it's lovely, and so I was just wondering if that needed to come into any kind of thought, but if applicant's not interested, it's more for my knowledge, if it was okay if they wanted to, and, okay, just good to know.
For those listening on radio, it was an emphatic no, but...
Yeah. Okay, good. No, otherwise I have no other questions for it.
Right.
Chair Friend, if I could just add a little bit onto that. Basically, with a temporary mobile home, there really aren't any impact fees that are applied to this unit, so if they were to convert it to an accessory dwelling in it, then we would calculate the appropriate amount of impact fees, so that's a little bit different. I think there's very little difference between a temporary placement or temporary foundation versus a permanent foundation. I think they're pretty much the same, so, but they could have the option to convert it to an ADU if they desire.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, so thank you.
Very good. Is any commissioner of mine to perhaps make a motion?
I'll go for it.
Thank you.
So I think the project is very appropriate. It sounds like there will be forward progress and looking forward to you enjoying your new home, hopefully, sooner than later. So I would like to make a motion to adopt the staff record as part of the public, the staff report as part of the public record, to make the following findings in support of TMH 23-01, including that it is categorically, it is exempt from environmental review. The project request is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of the zoning and temporary mobile home use permit zones, and that approval is based on the analysis provided in staff's December 5, 2023 report to the planning commission, and to conditionally approve 23-01 located at 3168 Airport Road based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report dated December 5, 2023.
Motion, is there a second?
Can I make a small change to your...
Can we have a second, please? I need a second before I can make an amendment.
I'll second.
You've got a motion and a second, sorry to strong-arm you.
No problem, that's okay. I just wanted, the staff report as amended is all I would change.
The inclusion of the make-model and year of the manufactured home inserted into the staff report.
Perfect.
Chair would offer that since that's understood, it's not really an amendment to the motion.
Understood, I apologize, I just wanted to make sure.
Appreciate that. I have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion? All right. One more roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Motion carries, project is approved at the commission level. Congratulations, FYI, it is subject to a 10-day appeal process. Doubt you'll have to worry about that, but FYI. Thank you very much. See you guys soon. Okay, moving on then to item 10.2. Site plan review, SPR 78-11-R2, Hangtown Village Square exterior lighting. This is consideration of a site plan review application within a highway commercial zone to modify the existing exterior lighting for an existing shopping center, Hangtown Village Square, including one, approval of existing unpermitted string lights along the front facade of the building and to find the project categorically exempt from SEQA per guidelines 15301. This is at 1216 to 1252 Broadway, and Ms. Hunter, you have the staff report.
I do, thank you. So SPR 78-11-R2 is a request for the addition of exterior lighting on the front facade of the multi-tenant retail buildings of Hangtown Village Square and Starbucks. The lighting is currently installed on the Hangtown Village Square buildings, and the request is the result of coordination between the Development Services Department and the property owners and management. Proposed lighting includes vintage-style globe filament string LED lighting along the lower edge of the roof line. The light emitted by the lights is a warm white color. As proposed, the lighting would be utilized during normal business hours and turned off after closing. It is the opinion of staff that the lighting does not create a nuisance to the neighboring properties or a safety hazard for drivers within the parking lot or on Broadway. The lighting adds architectural appeal to the buildings during nighttime hours. Overall, in staff's opinion, the lighting is consistent with the community design element of the Placerville General Plan as well as zoning ordinance sections 10-4-9, Site Plan Review, 10-4-16, Exterior Lighting Regulations, and 10-5-17, Highway Commercial Zone, in that the lighting shall be energy-efficient and non-glaring. The request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA guidelines section 15301 in that the project includes the minor alteration of an existing private structure that shall result in no expansion of the existing use. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of the SPR 78-11-R2 request, and conditionally approve SPR 78-11-R2 located at 1216 to 1252 Broadway based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report. This concludes staff's report on SPR 78-11-R2.
Thank you very much for that report. Questions of staff by commissioners?
I just have one quick one. Is there a reason that we didn't include the hours of operation in the conditions of approval? They're addressed in the staff report but not included in the conditions of approval. I didn't know if that was intentional or if it's...
No, I'm not, I'm not...
I just wanted to make sure I didn't, okay.
Yeah, we can certainly add them, I think that's a good idea, to be consistent with prior approvals.
Other, Commissioner Lepper?
In the conditions of approval, there's also the site plan review 78-11-R included. Was that just for background information?
We bring forward all prior approval conditions.
Okay.
We are trying to be more consistent with that, we apologize for previous, but this was how we brought forward the prior approvals.
Perfect.
We want it very clear which was which.
Great, yeah, I was just like, okay, why, am I supposed to be doing something with this? Okay, good. And then the other question I had is when looking through the packet, there were, there's a picture at night where the trees are lit up with lights, too. Am I imagining it? Yeah, almost the last picture, the trees, oh no, I'm sorry, I thought that was Christmas lights, it's totally the streetlight just shining down on it. Okay, I was like...
Same thing.
Yeah, I was like, it looks lovely, lit up, but I needed, I wanted to know if we needed to consider that as well in the approval. Okay.
But you know, on that, on that point, that's a good question. If, if an applicant, not necessarily these, wanted to add that kind of lighting, that would also be subject to planning commissioner approval, I presume?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, great. Good catching, even...
Yeah, I missed that, but it looked nice.
Commissioner Keeney?
That's all my questions.
Sorry. Commissioner Keeney?
Yeah, I had a question about the extent of the project.
Microphone? You just turned yourself off. You were all set to go.
In the staff report on page two, there's a project location map and two arrows. One points generally to where the Rite Aid is located in the center, shopping center, and then the other one points to what I think is probably the Starbucks location. Is the Starbucks building, or are the Starbucks building and the Taco Bell building included in the lighting project?
My understanding from the application is Starbucks and then the Hangtown Village Square buildings.
I'm sorry, it does include, or...
It does include Starbucks.
The Starbucks and the Taco Bell as well?
Not Taco Bell, just Starbucks.
Taco Bell is not part of the project. Okay, I think we maybe should clarify that, because then I got a little confused on the map that was part of the application. We have lots of photos, but I just want to make sure that it's clear in the record on all the buildings where the lights are to be installed. So the Taco Bell building is excluded, and, okay, that's fine, that's all I need to know. Except, I asked this question of Ms. Hunter earlier today, and the way I read our lighting ordinance is, there's a requirement under E1, and it says shielding is required so that neither the light source nor its image from a reflective surface shall be directly visible from any point five feet or more beyond the property line, and these are not shielded. And so, you know, I think, I just want to be clear whether in our findings it would be appropriate for that to be addressed, that because the form of this light is not shielded, that we, as part of approving the project, we're varying from this requirement in the zoning ordinance.
It's the chair's understanding that that aspect of the ordinance deals with parking lot lighting and not decorative lighting, because obviously the same thing could be said for illumination of your signs, you know, like Rite Aid, for example. Clearly, you can see that beyond five feet. So maybe the ordinance isn't clear, but it's always been my understanding that that was not decorative lighting of the type that we're considering this evening.
Chair Friend of staff could address the question. Basically, the shielding is something that the city typically requires on, say, floodlights, security lighting, parking lot lighting, those kinds of lighting where it's to be shielded and directed onto the property. When we're talking about architectural string lighting or neon tubing or band lighting that are along the building edges, of course, it would be impractical and wouldn't make sense to shield that kind of lighting. I don't think it's really possible. So what I recommend, if the commission would like to address that in your findings, you could reference section 10-416F2, which states that neon tubing or band lighting along building structures as articulation unless otherwise approved by the planning commission in conjunction with a site plan review. So that's under a section that lists all the types of lighting that are expressly prohibited, and it calls out that neon tubing, bad lighting along building structures is articulation, and we have, for quite some time, staff has interpreted that to include string lighting, so we include that in there. So as long as it comes before this body, you have the discretion to approve the string lighting as building articulation lighting, architectural lighting.
Great, thank you. Does that help, Commissioner?
I'm not satisfied with that at all. I'm very, I understand that this is based on your vast experience, and I appreciate you sharing that with us, but, you know, reading the ordinance as it's written, I, you know, I just, I disagree with that interpretation, but, you know, we'll move forward with that since that's how this has been applied in the past, and this is, you know, I'm not looking to change that. I just want to make sure that our decision is substantiated by findings that, you know, that are robust, and the way I read the plain language of the ordinance is that it is, it doesn't specify, it doesn't limit it to security lighting or floodlighting, things like that. To me, I just, you know, I read the language, and in the development guide, it's not further addressed, you know, that's another opportunity for the city to clarify the intent of this. So I think, you know, I'm a bit disappointed in, I guess I'm more confused, and I just think at this point, it's an opportunity for city council maybe to direct staff to update this ordinance. These types of string lights are becoming much more popular, and I think, and we've seen them installed in a lot of places, so this might be coming before us more often, and I just think clarification for my benefit, and then also for building owners, property owners, so that they can read the ordinance and know, you know, what is expected, or read the development guidelines so that they know, they can anticipate what is acceptable and, you know, and can be easily approved. So I think that's the only, the only conundrum I had on this, looking at the zoning standard and the project as described, so, thank you.
I think it's true that string lighting has, over the years, become a lot more popular and a lot more prevalent, but...
And energy efficient.
And also energy efficient, but I think that it's a very, very substantially different type of lighting than security lighting and parking lot lighting and floodlighting and the like. So probably even by matter of simply a memorandum, if nothing else, to help with the clarification on that. Other questions? Commissioner Carter, have questions of staff?
I just have a quick matter of disclosure that I forgot to give earlier. Mr. Walker, the app, the agent, is also the manager of the nearly adjacent building at 1166 Broadway, which houses my wife and my business, so I just want to make sure that that's fully...
Right.
Just that small bit of relationship there.
I have a couple of questions, if I might, and these questions actually also apply to the next item on the agenda, who I think is almost identical to this one. First, are, it was, is not clear to me, are we permitting this lighting in general or the specific lights that the applicant is showing? Because there are a lot of different types of string lights. In fact, between the two applicants on string lighting, one is, they're...
Cause there are a lot of different types of string lights. In fact, between the two applicants on string lighting, one is, they're, they're different, right? But, but our approach is going to be the same. So first question, are we approving string lights in general? Or if, if, well, let me put the question a different way. If this applicant were to take down the string lights that they have now, late, after we approve it, and were to put up the ones that are on the other business that we're going to talk about in a minute, do they have to go through a repertaining process or is, or are we basically, uh, approving string lighting as a, in a, as a general group? Uh, you are approving what is specifically before you. So you are approving string lighting and the lighting, the bulbs that are specified in this code. So if they were to come in with something different, you know, staff would have the opportunity to make a finding of substantial consistency.
Thank you.
If we saw any difference in the illumination, the output, the wattage, we would come, we would bring that back to you.
You would bring, if it was substantially different, you'd bring it back? Otherwise administratively, you could handle it.
That's correct.
Because yeah, these are substantially similar.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
But I believe these lights are already installed, so this is after the fact, but we're, we're fine with them.
Okay. Uh, alright, well then that answers a couple of questions. And then, um, I noticed in the staff report, both for this item and the other item, uh, we talk about, uh, having sent courtesy notices and that's how we're kind of getting to this. I was curious, what is the compliance rate? Can you guess to the compliance rate? I'm, I'm sure these aren't the only courtesy notices you've sent out. Probably sent out a bunch of them. I'm just, these, these seem to be the first responses to courtesy notices that I'm aware of. And I'm really happy that folks are responding in this manner. They're saying, yeah, well, we'll take care of this straight away. Cause I know there's probably time and some expense associated with it. But what does that look like in terms of percent compliance?
I'm not sure percentage wise, um, but we have had numerous responses already. Some have chosen to take down the lights rather than go through the site plan review process. A prior, um, application that was before you was BRICS. That was the result of a courtesy notice and coordination between staff and the property owner, business owner. I'm not, I'm not sure on the percentage.
Okay, alright, just out of curiosity. And I would say, uh, consider taking down the lights is also compliance, right? So, okay, uh, seeing no other questions by commissioners to staff, uh, we'll go ahead and, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing, invite the applicant or their agent to address the commission, uh, on this matter if they choose. Commissioners may have some questions. Uh, to me, it seems pretty straightforward, but, uh, you never know. So who's jo, who's drawing the short straw? Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Thank you for attending.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, uh, do you have anything you want to offer in addition or?
Well, I, if you have any more questions.
Sure. I'll yield to the commissioners. Anyone, any of the commissioners have questions of the applicant? I think it's pretty straightforward and thank you for approaching it in this manner and, uh, taking care of business. So, uh, don't run off in case a question should come up.
Okay.
Alright, anyone in the audience, anyone else in the audience wish to address the commission on this?
Judy Putoff, managing partner, Hangtown Village Square. I think one thing that, that was sort of a question and you may not all understand it. We completed new roofs on Starbucks this summer. So the lights were taken off of that building because the old shake roofs were gone, the flat portions were replaced. It was a really big project that we've been working on for about four years because it involved numerous contractors that during the COVID era and afterwards, we simply couldn't get. And, uh, so that's why there are no lights on Starbucks. The reason that Taco Bell is exempt is we sold that parcel, uh, I think about two thousand and fourteen. And, um, so we don't have any control on, on that portion. Does that clear up that question?
I think it does.
Alright. Um, first of all, I want to thank the staff for its thorough report and its findings and, and its approval. We do appreciate that. We appreciate the working relationship. Our family has had business interests in Placerville since the eighteen fifties. I think Kirk Smith's family is in a little bit earlier than us, about eighteen forty-seven or so. And he had a relative that was a car dealer as my father had a car dealership for thirty-five years. I find kind of the parallels between our lives very interesting. We opened officially in March of nineteen eighty. For forty-four years, Steve and I have managed this. And for the last twenty-five years, Mr. Walker has been responsible and he and his staff for maintaining our buildings, our grounds and keeping our wonderful tenants happy. There is a debt of gratitude I, I will never be able to repay to Mr. Walker. He is simply irreplaceable. I say that I work for Fred. His twenty-four seven, he is on this property seven days a week. He comes down from Pollock Pines at night if he's needed. He's in contact with the Placerville Police Department. They have thanked him for his efforts to control vagrants and druggies on Broadway. I have felt that at times we were perhaps the sole protectors of Broadway. And he and his staff have been threatened. Um, they've been spit on. They've been assaulted. The work that goes into maintaining this property in the way that it is maintained is nothing short of heroic. You're probably aware, I, I just want to speak to the business climate, if you will indulge me for a moment, because you may not be aware. We're not recovered from the effects of the COVID shutdowns. Some businesses skated through and were fine. Others were not. We didn't lose one tenant. Why didn't we lose anybody? Because we cared. We forgave rents. We rewrote leases. We paid for tenant improvements. We absorbed CAM costs. We're in this about a half a million dollars to keep our center intact. You need to know what it takes to maintain this small business climate in Placerville, particularly to the extent that we do it. I care about these people. Fred cares about these people. Steve cares about these people that have entrusted their businesses to us. Some of them for decades. I think Marion Fitzpatrick has been a tenant for close to forty years. Absolutely amazing, amazing, amazing people. We would do anything for them. Our economy is plagued with rising costs for everything, including wages. It's not easy, not easy. Consumers have discovered that they don't need to drive to shop. They don't have to come up on Broadway and go into our shops. They can sit at home and order, have it delivered to their front porch sometimes the same day. This is a terrible blow to our small businesses. And if you're not aware of that, you need to be aware of that. And then we had our insurance policies canceled. I've spoken to business owners that have had theirs and what was our alternative? There was a period last year that for two weeks, we had no insurance on Hangtown Village Square. Can you imagine how frightening that was? We had people on the grounds twenty-four seven, going around the buildings, eyes, ears, everywhere. I was scared out of my gourd. And, and we were finally thrust into what I call unfair plan because our costs more than tripled and the insurance was not agreeable to our lender. That was a terrible situation. We finally found through the efforts of one of our tenants, who's an insurance agent who worked doggedly for us, not with the companies that he knew, but with anybody. And he found somebody else in Diamond Springs with an agency that could get us coverage. What did we have to do to do it? We had to replace the Rite Aid roof, which was in good condition and still under warranty. Another hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get that insurance. This is just some of the stuff that we have to go through. We didn't lose anybody. They're still there. And now we're faced with a bankruptcy of our largest tenant that's been with us for forty years. I don't know where this is going, but they're headed into bankruptcy court. We've been asked to make terrible concessions with the result that we don't know. We don't know if they'll leave. We don't know if they'll sell. We don't know what's going to happen. This is happening with a lot of the drugstore chains. They've been hit by lawsuits on this opioid, opioid epidemic. They've been faced with terrible losses with theft. They call it a shrinkage rate. And it's affecting us. I don't know where all this is going, but we need to support each other. I really like on, on the headline of, of your, um, staff report, "We're a welcoming, active and business-friendly rural foothill community." I really urge you in your decisions to keep that in the forefront of your mind. Be friendly to us. Kirsten, if you have something that you need, come and talk to us. I had one business owner say, "Just talk to me. Just talk to me." One of the things that has been really, um, disagreeable is that you can't put up a banner without paying two hundred dollars to last a month. That's not been well received. I had one of our tenants who, we kind of did a policy of putting a banner under our, under our big monument sign to help advertise a sale or an event or something going on for one of our tenants. She remarked, and this was last year, that she had people came, come in that said, "I didn't know you were here." That's kind of scary to us, but she thanked us for that. But she said, gee, if I have to pay for the cost of the banner and another two hundred dollars to the city and I only get to put it up for thirty days, maybe it's not worth it. I just say that as a cautionary tale to remind yourself to be business friendly. I know you've got your rules, you've got your regulations. Think about these things. So instead of looking just at problems, look at ways you can help us. How can you help us? How can you help us survive? How can you help that small merchant continue to stay in business? Gosh, we've got the hardware store that's been here since the eighteen fifties. That's incredible. I'm an optimistic person, but I'm realistic that I don't know where we're headed. I don't know how we're going to survive in an economy that has the problems that it has and with a consumer base that more and more finds their computer more attractive than driving to a store. We've got to remember this because those sales tax dollars keep this city afloat. You need us and we need you. And if there's only one thing that I can convey tonight is how important it is that we support each other. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to address the commission on this item? Commissioner Carter, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, uh, thank you for addressing that because I did do a site visit, uh, during the day and at night. And I was curious about the Starbucks because it, it was never lit up. Is it your intention to put the lights back on the Starbucks now that the project is done? Okay, and then the site plan review covers that. They are allowed to do that under this current site plan review. Okay. Uh, I just want to, the, the lights are, they're beautiful. They're professionally installed. They're even removed behind the, the signs and the, I mean, it's, it's a very well-done project. It looks great. It adds great ambiance. Um, I'm fully behind it. I just would like to know if my, uh, fellow commissioners are willing to put that, uh, hours of operation in the conditions of approval. That's the only, uh, thing that I would add to this. Otherwise, thank you very much and, uh, yeah, it looks beautiful.
Commissioner Keeney?
I just wanted to add, yeah, we can probably, uh, we'll bring it back to, sorry, yes, the commission.
Great, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to, uh, commission for discussion and hopefully action. Uh, I think the hours of operation is, uh, a, a good item, just to be consistent with every.
Yeah, that's a, you know, it's in the ordinance, but, um, yeah, I think it's worthwhile to go ahead and state it clearly in the, uh, conditions of approval.
Well, and especially because, um, they're offering a, a different hours of operation than is in, because it's from business open to business close, according to the staff report, which isn't exactly in line with ordinance.
Right. So they're, they're specifying, and, um, as you point, well, as you know, it, um, it runs with the, the land. So if that's the intent and that's what we approved today, I, yeah, I think it's good to specify that. I was going to add to, um, the findings that, um, you know, we talk about how, uh, again, this is called out from the, uh, the zoning ordinance, um, energy efficient, non-glaring. And I would like to add, under photocell control, I think that also adds to your energy efficiency. That, you know, these things are triggered by when the, um, um, sun goes down. You, is that not true? I see you have your hand up. Uh, can we bring the applicant back up to address that?
Good, please, in, uh, bringing the microphone up. There you go, sir, thanks. Check, check, one, two.
Testing.
There you go, that's much better.
The lights are on a photocell, but they stay on all night long for security purposes.
We have a tenant that's twenty-four hours.
Snap Fitness twenty, twenty-four seven.
So all the, all the lights, uh, for the entire shopping center stay on for twenty-four?
Certified dark skies.
From dusk to, to dawn? Just to, because, um, Snap Fitness is operational twenty-four hours a day.
And, and with, and for security purposes also, we leave the lights on. They're all LED, uh, very efficient.
Commissioner Lepper?
Um, that was going to be my question about what you were saying about hours of operation. I'm hesitant to do so because if there is a change in tenancy and the hours of operation are, let's say, and I'm not sure if this is what you meant, but I interpreted what you were saying is, okay, say Rite Aid's open till ten and then they turn off. But if someone else moves into the Rite Aid and they're open till midnight, I'm hesitant to put a time barrier on here. I also agree that they are not obtrusive at night. I don't think they give off a significant amount of light that we need to be managing for, such as we did on the security lights at the other center in the back. We managed for those at night, um, but still allowing them to have light at night, but.
Don't sit down. I, I have a follow-up.
Okay, so.
Continue, I just didn't want to get away.
That was going to be my question and, and so I actually am hesitant to put, um, the, the specified time hours.
But we could say, make it generic and say hours, uh, during business hours and turned off after closing. My question then to the property manager is suppose Snap Fitness, uh, is no longer twenty-four hours a day or another fitness center comes in and, and they close at ten. Do you still need the lights for security when the business is not operational?
For security purposes, I would say yes.
You would?
We would, but as, as a whole, uh, Snap Fitness, they're nationwide and they're all twenty-four seven.
Yeah, but if they, if they decide to, to, to move and, or they change their hours of operation, does the, does, do you think the facility needs this lighting to help with security?
Being, being in the, the neighborhood that it's in and the issues that we have here on Broadway, um, I, I would say, you know, it's worth keeping the lights on for, for safety and security and visibility.
So it's your preference to keep, uh, this as a photocell trigger, uh, just on, at, from, the lights are on from dusk until dawn?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying and I, I appreciate and, uh, understand the need for the security lighting. Thanks for clarifying that for us and.
Thank you.
Anybody have?
I like, I like the idea of it being, because I think it's actually attractive security lighting. If we, if, if we were to deny them turning it off, um, then they may come back to us for some more proactive security lighting, which may not be as pleasant. And so I think, I see this kind of as a dual thing, um, that allows them to have the, the decorative lights, but does provide a level of security for our community that I think is, is beneficial.
I support allowing decorative and similar lighting to be on dusk till dawn. I think for a variety of reasons and I think getting back to, and, and you can go ahead and have a seat, I think. And getting back to the comments that, that we heard, I think, um, they resonate with, with me. And I think getting back to, and you can go ahead and have a seat, I think, and getting back to the comments that we heard, I think they resonate with me in any way. And it is a very, very difficult climate, and this is, I think, a small thing that we can do to help. With regards, though, just for consistency, the lighting that we have just approved for the buildings downtown, what were the hours of, we, those go off, right? Yeah, those go off maybe at midnight, but.
If memory serves, I thought the commission placed an 11.
Yeah, so we did place restriction, but those lights weren't, aren't designed to serve any kind.
That's not for security at all.
They're not serving any kind of a security function, so, yeah, so, okay, all right. I'm comfortable without restriction on these.
Yeah, so I guess my mistake first, I should have asked the question, but I assume that the businesses in that center closed before 11:00, not realizing that Snap Fitness is, of course, open 24 hours. I've been there in the middle of the night. We do have, our ordinance requires that all these lights be turned off at 11:00 PM. That's the reason that we included that in the downtown lighting. So we would have to make an exception to the ordinance for this. For consistency purposes, especially since we just required another applicant to turn their lights off per our ordinance, I would like them to follow our ordinance or get rid of our ordinance. I mean, I understand what you guys are saying as far as security and, you know, but this is decorative lighting. It does add to a level of security, I understand that, but this is decorative lighting. It's, and per our ordinance, per our laws, it is supposed to be turned off at 11:00 PM. So if you guys are willing to give them an exception, that's up to you. I am not, I would like to see everybody consistently follow our rules and regulations, or nobody follow our rules and regulations, and we change them. So that's my position. I would like to see these turned off at 11 o'clock per our code, so. Up to the chair, I can't give you permission to come to the, but.
Oh, but just, I just found it in the, I have the ordinance on my phone, you just bear with me. Our ordinance, and this is number five, I'm sorry, but it says that hours of illumination, the last sentence is, exceptions are that outdoor lights may remain on in conjunction with the hours of operation of the corresponding use for security purposes or to illuminate walkways, roadways, equipment yards, and parking lots. So there is that exception for security in our, it's right after it talks about turning them off at 11:00 PM. So, you know, you're right that that's the way it reads, however, the ordinance has already accommodated this exception, and this is number five.
Okay, I did not realize that.
E5, so we aren't in.
So we can easily find, we can easily find that they meet that threshold for an exception, per the ordinance, okay.
So since we don't, we aren't running counter to our own ordinance, I think we don't have to have a finding under the, our action, but I think we should call it out as a condition of approval.
Find that they fall within that category for exemption, understood, okay.
So lighting could be operation, operational dusk to dawn to enhance security? I'm not sure.
And allow for tenant hours.
Well, you could also handle it as a finding, but we find, we find that as proposed, they're consistent with the ordinance as written. And then we don't really have to even get into the details, right? And you just established the finding, basically. You read the ordinance, and we have what's proposed, and it's our, at least my assessment, that they are in compliance. That's a finding, so if you want to make that finding, that the application as proposed is consistent with the ordinance, then I think we're good to go. We don't really have to speak too much more to it.
What about an additional condition of approval to?
But if they're, why would you have a?
They are allowed to.
I would like to see that, that they meet, that they qualify for an exemption per that section of the code in the condition, just have that articulated somewhere.
Chair won't want to oppose, I don't think it's necessary, but I won't vote against it. All right.
I just had one other request that I'd like to make for the conditions of approval, just a wording thing. Number two, I think we should replace, I'm sorry, remove the phrase "at a minimum." So it just says, "Missing or spent light bulb shall be replaced within a week of failure." Just, I would think it was just too wordy and a little confusing, and the minimum kept throwing me off. I didn't like, I just didn't like how that looked, so if we could take "at a minimum" out of number two, that was my suggestion.
Anyone prepared to make a motion?
I didn't write down the new wording, I'm sorry, so if you want to.
Okay, I'll move. That we follow the recommendation, recommendations in the report, in the staff report, that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record and make the listed findings in support of SPR 78-11-R2, the request, including that it's exempt from further environmental review under SEQA. Number two, that the project site, Broadway, contains a single-story shopping center and fast food business located within the highway commercial zone. Project request is consistent with Placerville General Plan Community Design Element Goal B. And my motion will include that we add at the end of number three there, it says, "Exterior lighting regulations shall be energy-efficient, non-glaring, and under photocell control." Again, just emphasizing what's called out in our existing ordinance. The project request is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of the zoning ordinance, 10-4-9. Site plan review, 10-4-16, and 10-5-17 under highway commercial businesses. Staff has reviewed the conditions of approval from planning approvals, and it's found that the conditions are being met. Approval is based on the analysis provided in the staff's December 5, 2023, report to the planning commission, and limited to compliance with the project description and the applicant's submitted package. And that we conditionally approve SPR 78-11-R2 located at 1216 to 1252 Broadway, based on the project information and findings in the staff report, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, included in attachment one of the staff report dated December 5, 2023. And under the recommended conditions of approval, except those with the following changes. Under number two, strike the words "at a minimum," replaced, so a bulb shall be replaced within a week of failure. And we have add an eleventh condition of approval of the hours of operation. Lighting shall be operational dusk to dawn for security purposes per 10-4-16, E Section 5. And we're also carrying through site plan review, SPR 11-R, there are seven additional conditions that are being carried through at this time. So that is my motion.
Motion, I have a motion and a second duly made. Further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Carter?
That was 10-4-16, Section 5 on that.
10-4-16, E5.
10-4-16, E5.
Thank you for the clarification.
Other discussion?
I probably stumbled over that, trying to look at my phone to get the numbering and everything.
Good job on that, by the way. Other discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to, before we close this, I, you know, I concur with Commissioner Carter's assessment. I think this is a fine installation, the, you know, submittal. I was a little confused by the map, and, but all the pictures really do tell the story. You can tell, you know, the lighting is of good quality, it's been installed, so the wires are really not visible. And so I think, you know, this really is a nice addition to the shopping center.
Well said. Well, no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Ferran?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. There is a 10-day appeal process, as you heard me say earlier, and thank you for complying with our requirements. And your comments about the difficult business climate are not lost, and it is really, really difficult. And there may be some things that the city we can look at to leave, perhaps at least on a temporary basis, we've done in the past, take a look at things. Because business climate and how business is conducted is certainly different than when I first started as a commissioner. We need to adapt as well as businesses are forced to adapt, so. All right. Thank you. Item 10-3, site plan review, SPR 23-16. This will be consideration of a site plan review application within the highway commercial zone to modify the existing exterior lighting for an existing retail business, including approval of an existing unpermitted string lights along the deja vu from facade of building, and to find the project categorically exempt from SEQA 15301. Location of the project is 1245 Broadway, Placerville. Ms. Hunter, I believe you have the staff report.
Thank you. So similar to the prior request, SPR 23-16, yeah, is a request for the addition of exterior lighting on the front facade of the retail building located at the subject parcel, Placerville Spoke Shop. The lighting is currently installed on the lower roofline of the building, and the request is a result of coordination between the Development Services Department and the property owners. The proposed lighting includes LED string lights with retro market light bulbs along the lower edge of the roofline. The light emitted by the lights is a warm white color. As proposed, the lighting would be utilized during normal business hours and turned off after closing. It is the opinion of staff that the lighting does not create a nuisance to neighboring properties or a safety hazard for drivers on Broadway. The lighting adds architectural appeal to the building during nighttime hours. Overall, in staff's opinion, the lighting is consistent with the community design element of the general plan, as well as the zoning ordinance sections 10-4-9, site plan review, 10-4-16, exterior lighting regulations, and 10-5-17, highway commercial zone, in that the lighting shall be energy-efficient and non-glaring. The request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA guidelines, Section 15301, in that the project includes the minor alteration of an existing private structure that shall result in no expansion of the existing use. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of SPR 23-16, and conditionally approve SPR 23-16 located at 1245 Broadway, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report. This concludes staff report on SPR 23-16.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter, appreciate that. This should be easier, since we just kind of went through this, but questions of staff by commissioners? I had a question, and it just went away, so we'll just dispense with that. And we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the applicant or their agent to address the commission. Is it possible you are the agent for this or the applicant? You are? Okay, great, we may have some questions. First, I'd like to say two things. One, as I said before to the previous applicant, thank you for complying.
Yeah, yeah.
And two, I'm personally appreciative that your choice for compliance was, instead of removing the lights, you're keeping them on. Because I do think, as the staff report indicated, they do add visual and artistic interest to Broadway, which really in some respects, you know, needs all the help that it can get. I'm going to go ahead and jump in, I have one more question, since you heard us talk about the hours of operation. Are yours dawn to dusk as well, or yours different?
The shop closes, I believe, at 8:00.
Okay.
The lights get shut off when they close.
Okay, all right, so here's our hours of operation, then.
Yeah, and they have, they got, they have, you know, window lighting too and everything, you know.
Sure, sure.
They have roll-up shutters and.
Okay.
Close everything up and.
And do you also have these under the photocell control so that they come on at dusk?
No, there's no photocell control, it's just they shut it off when they leave.
So, then they, so when do they come, they come on at a certain time, or just?
They just come, when they come in in the morning, or, you know, when it gets dark.
When it gets dark, yeah, they just kind of turn it on and, okay.
You know, when they close up shop.
Uh huh.
You know, and I'm sure they have a routine they have to do because they have roll-up shutters and all kinds of things, you know, and a lot of lighting. It would be very expensive for them.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I actually did drive by your shop a couple of times, and when it was, the shutters were down, the lights were out, everything was all buttoned up, so that's, that's great. But, and so it's just whoever's on duty, it's their responsibility to pop those lights on as the sun starts to go down.
Exactly, it's up to them to turn them off, so.
Okay, other questions for the app? Okay, so you actually, it was a little bit easier since we dealt with the major, big ones before you, so, all right.
Small potatoes.
Yeah, they're not.
About 60 feet of lights.
Every business is, every business is important. Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate you showing up. Anyone in the audience else wish to address this project? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to commission for discussion and possible action. Commissioner Keeney, I see you have your light on.
Oh, it's just on all the time.
Well, that means you're first up. Commissioner Carter?
I, much like the last item, I would like to see some kind of hours of operation in the conditions of approval. I guess the problem, my ideal was just to say that they comply with city ordinance, but then that would require them to put a photocell on their lights if they're complying with the ordinance, so I guess that complicates things.
Since the applicant has indicated that they are based on hours of operation, then we could simply say that their, the lighting, lighting use shall be restricted to hours of operation? And I would assume if they were going to, if they wanted to do something different, as long as it was consistent with the ordinance, they could, the staff could deal with that administratively, but.
Yeah, I was trying to not complicate it for them, but also address that. So the wording in the staff report, proposed lighting will be utilized during normal business hours and will be turned off after closing, we could just carry that forward into conditions of approval, I think that would.
Yeah, that's a good way to handle it, great.
Yeah, I like that, and again, I'd like to request to remove "at a minimum" from the conditions of approval, but otherwise, I think everything looks good.
Anything else?
Just one comment, unlike the example across the street, I'm not a fan of this style of string lights. You know, this is, it's a, it's a fashion, it's kind of the steampunk fashion, and these are very popular, and, you know, and I appreciate, too, that this style may go out of style at some point, and you or another owner may want to change that out. And so, you know, I, I'm not a fan of this, but going by your business, when they're on it, it does add some ambiance. I was not inclined toward an approval, but, you know, what you said, Commissioner Ferran, is that, yeah, it does add something to that section of Broadway, it improves it. And we had similar lighting come before us for another building, and that was in our downtown district. And, you know, I'm just, I'm going to change my mind here, based on what I've heard during this public hearing. We do have different standards, and, you know, and that is, that's the thing about planning. If only things could be, you know, black or white, and that's why we are up here to try to use our judgment, our knowledge, take information. And I think that applying that strict aesthetic that I thought was appropriate, that is appropriate for downtown, maybe isn't appropriate for this more modest building in almost, you know, the highway commercial zone, so. And I really appreciate you, I want to underscore what our chair said about you coming down to answer, it really does make a difference for you to answer and take care of our concerns, so. That's, so that's just, I wanted to put that out there, that, you know, I drove by this, the size of the bulb is about the same as what you have across the street, this, that was installed in the Hangtown Village, but it's the, the way it. But it's the, the way it hangs down from the wire. And so it really is a more casual look, a kind of a backyard party feel. And, but the way it's installed on your building, you have it secured underneath the roof, you know, as securely as you can, so. It's not really dangling, just, just the extension for the actual bulb itself. So that's, that's the style. And it's so, you know, I think as far as the installation, it was a good job, so. I, you know, I think my concerns have been addressed.
And just to follow up with that, I agree with you. I, when I went by, I liked that it was a little bit different, but similar to across the street because then it's not, looks like we're having everyone just install the same lights across town. It gave it a little more character, so I considered that too. But I think it is similar, but slightly different to give it a little bit of a different taste, but keep in the same vein of the other building across the street.
If it was, you know, if money were no object, we'd have it all the same. I, to me, I would like to have them identical, but, you know, there are different budgets. Like I said, this is a more modest project as opposed to what they have across the street. So I have to appreciate that, you know, that it's not a one-light-fits-all kind of situation.
I did go back and watch the, I had watched it previously, but I also re-watched it again, the October 17th hearing that I was not here at, where you guys discussed the Bricks lights. And, and I found the reasoning for your denial to them to be separate from this. So I think taking those ones down, but allowing for what I consider to be similar lighting here, I think is well, was well explained. Makes sense?
I was gonna address that also because the difference between the two projects is that the Bricks building was actually using them as a full. And so with these drop lights, you get a very un-uniform appearance unless they're installed correctly, which I do believe that they are in this building, completely uniform, and I think they look great. That was the distinction between the two projects, definitely.
Yes, and I think I said, I think that those are clear and that were well-regarded for why you made those decisions. So just to be clear of why, why I'm in favor of these, I wasn't at the last meeting, but why I understand why you didn't approve these similar lights at Bricks as hung, but that these are good. So with that, I'm.
Thank you.
Ready? Okay, cool. So I would like to make a motion to adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings as listed in support of SPR 23-16 request as listed on page seven of the staff report, and conditionally approve SPR 23-16 located at 1245 Broadway based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 of the staff report dated December 5, 2023. On the recommended conditions of approval, we will strike the words "at a minimum" from number two. And now that I'm saying this, so were we adding a reference to the hours or was that clear to you in the staff report?
I would like to add that and.
To pull forward the language.
On page five, the wording from the staff report, the proposed lighting will be utilized during business hours and be turned off after closing.
I was going to recommend that we say dusk to close a business. I, you know, even though this is a low wattage bulb, doesn't use a lot of energy, still, just to make every effort we can to, you know, minimize the running of the lights, if we could just say that they operate from dusk to close a business.
Are they allowed to have them on during the day, though?
Or decorated?
If they wanted to? I don't know.
The chair would really prefer a second on the motion.
Oh, sorry about that.
Before we get into too much, that's all right, before we get into too much discussion.
Oh, I thought that was part of the motion.
Yeah, so, let's see.
She has to make the motion and we can ask for clarification and, you know, we get a second and.
So your hours of operation.
To finish my motion, I'll say that we're striking "at a minimum" from number two and adding condition number 10, that the proposed lighting will be utilized during normal business hours and will be turned off after closing. That's my proposition, that we just carry that forward, call it a day.
Is there a second to the motion?
I will second that.
First and second, additional discussion or clarification on the motion?
Okay, I'll bring in my discussion. I would prefer that it read, our hours of operation would be from dusk to close a business just as an acknowledgement to, you know, minimize the electrical energy usage. The ordinance discusses photocells and that kind of thing. And, yeah, so I would appreciate that consideration.
For, just for technical accuracy, the ordinance does not restrict the operation of decorative lights.
The ordinance discusses the use of photocell.
Correct.
And low-energy bulbs, so.
Right.
In acknowledgement of our concern.
These LED, right? These LED? These are LED bulbs. They meet that requirement.
Right, and if, the use of a photocell would further minimize the use of electricity.
But they're, but they're, they're turning them on and off as they would choose to use them, right? And I mean, going back to the discussion that we.
Well, I can't, I would disagree that the, the lights should be on when the sun is up.
But what if it's a cloudy day? Like, you know what I mean?
I mean, if a business is using lights to decorate their business, like.
I'm with the, you know, more the, the photocell control would, would take care of that. If it's dark enough that the photocell says, lights come on, then.
But that's not the point I'm trying to make. The point I'm trying to make is going back to, we heard a fairly impassioned, not plea per se, but a very accurate, I think, description of how difficult the business climate is. And here's a, here's a real small thing that we have the opportunity to do by not doing, by not saying, you're only going to be able to use your decorative lights during these hours. I think, I think that gets right to the heart of one of the things, if symbolically, if not substantively, of what she was saying. And so it, it makes me really uncomfortable because they're already using LED lights. And what if they went ahead and put in solar to power, to power their lighting? So I think it's unnecessary for us to exert this level of intrusion into the business owner, I'd like my shop to stand out, I want to decorate it, boom, here's how I'm going to do it. What if the lights were, were inside, right? I mean, so I, I, I don't think we need to add that condition. It's not required by the ordinance.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep my motion as stated of "at a minimum," removal and proposed lighting will be utilized during normal business hours and will be turned off after closing. That would be my motion.
Additional discussion on the motion?
Well, I, you know, I've stated my case, you know, I appreciate a business climate and the impassioned pleas. This runs with the land. Business climates change. They, they're good, they're bad. We're looking at something that is supposed to be durable. Our, I read our ordinance, you know, we are to be aware of energy efficiency. Just because you're using a low-energy bulb doesn't mean you're using zero electricity. So, you know, it is just carrying forward the, to those of us who are concerned about energy efficiency, it's, you know, it's important to send that message to the rest of the community that we are concerned about energy usage. And so that's why I wanted to minimize the, the use of, of lights to dusk to close a business. I don't think that that's onerous and I don't think it detracts from the business. In fact, I think it's a little, when I go by a business that has outdoor lights on during the day, I find it a little wasteful as far as a consumer. I, I think that they're really not paying attention to me. It just makes sense for them to come on, but at dusk. But, you know, that, that's my perspective and I certainly am not going to, you know, hold up this project because of my, my preference for energy efficiency. They, they are doing a good job using a, a low-energy bulb. If it was solar, again, you know, it's not zero electricity. It's, that's just another source of, of the power. So, you know, I, I just can't agree with that. But if the, the rest of you don't want to limit the operation to dusk to close a business, I said I'm not going to hold up the project for that.
I think you just nailed it. It's not that I don't, I totally agree with the heart of your statements. I think it's just unnecessary to include restrictions of, of what you're describing. I don't think it's going to be, I just don't think it's necessary. That's just my.
As always, the chair appreciates your insight and views on things, even if we're not in concordance. Still, respect them. If there's no further discussion, I'm gonna go ahead and call the question. Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. It, your request is approved. As I've been saying all evening, there is, of course, a 10-day appeal process you're subject to. But thank you for complying and thank you for keeping the lights. All right. Item 11, we have no continued items. Item 12, we have no new business items. 13, matters from commissioners and staff. We'll go ahead and start with 13.1, staff reports. Staff have, staff has no reports at this time unless, of course, Planner Hunter has anything to say. We will have a meeting. But happy to answer any questions you might have.
We do have a meeting on December 19th.
12/19?
Well, 12/19.
Thank you.
Yes, and we intend to have January 2nd canceled.
Okay. All right, very good.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else from staff? Items from Planning Commission matters, from commissioners. We'll go ahead and start with 13-2-1, the special committee report. Commissioner Carter, anything since our last meeting?
Yeah, obviously, we had intended to have that memo to you guys today, but with the holidays and scheduling and health complications, we're gonna need a little bit more time. Appreciate your indulgence on that. Want to make sure that we deliver a product that's not rushed. We've had zero opportunity to meet since our last meeting and so it's really been, anyway. So we will definitely get that, yeah, it's that time of year, obviously. And so, yeah, I appreciate your indulgence on giving us more time on that. And, yeah, we'll, we'll have that to you guys as soon as possible.
All right, very good. Anyone else?
I have a couple of things.
Go ahead.
If I may, I wanted to let other commissioners know that I finished a, a training through the California Preservation Foundation. It was called the SOI Boot Camp and Training for the Secretary of Interior Standards. It, it was, it was good. It wasn't really applicable. A lot of it wasn't applicable to what we are confronting with our historic districts. But it's really good to see how strict application of these standards, you know, what it, what it results in. And so, you know, it, it is good education. The final day of the, it was, there were three parts. And on the final day, I would say that one was the most apt for us here in Placerville, mostly because they had chat rooms going and questions being asked from, by people in other municipalities who are facing the same kinds of things that we are with our residences. They have, their jurisdiction has created a historic district and was kind of vague. And now people want to do things with, with houses and make them livable and, and update them, but keep the, and so we're not the only ones struggling with this, so.
Were they in California, most of the, the attending?
Most of the people were in California. There were a lot of interesting case studies, most of which, oh, half and half, outside of the state of California. But it was, it was really great to see those case studies. One thing I want, or a few things I wanted to point out to you folks is, under new construction, the experts were talking about how the emphasis on new construction, so adjacent, adjoining a historic building. The emphasis should be on complementary features, not copied. And that one really struck me. They showed us several houses where they're, usually the older part is of the house, historic parts in front, and they've added on to the back or the side. And I was considering just the project that we approved last meeting over on, close to the Episcopal Church. Strict application of the standards, we would have required, we, we did have them do cedar siding, as I recall. But we should have, strict application of the standards would have required a different type of siding be used on the addition. So that could be the cement fiber board, that could be stucco. Actually, stucco would probably be better in terms of how these people apply the standards. To them, it's important to have a distinction between, from the outside, this is definitely the old part and this is definitely the new part. What we were looking at was something that's under, I think it was under a thousand square feet. And so, not sure that strict application was, would be the best approach, but, you know, just in terms of the projects that we have had to look at, that, that one really hit home for, for us. So I'm not saying that we, what we did was wrong. What we did was not strict application of the standards. And honestly, I want to take a closer look at carbon copy next door. The remodel that they've done, I think even, that's not historic building, but it's a, it's an appreciation of a historic and older, you know, structure that has been added on to. And so the, you know, come back down during the day and you'll notice that, you know, two architectural, different styles. Stucco and a rock facade, I think, on the street. And then you can see the older structure behind it. I really think that if you brought in an expert to take a look at that, they would say, oh, yeah, you, you know, you nailed it. Because you, obviously, you're still using the structure. That's the point of this. Keep things, you know, available, but that's the old part and this is the new part. So I thought that was really interesting. They also emphasized, and I think that we can take heart, this is subjective review. It's inherent in the process. And so I, most of us are comfortable, I said it earlier tonight, black and white. We would really like to have, you know, this, this, not this. But a lot of people struggle with this, but, you know, just accept that it is our, our experience and our subjective aesthetic is, is a valid, is, and is required in review of these kind of projects. Also, I just said black and white. They recommended that planning development departments avoid a checklist format for these kinds of projects. Don't, you know, okay, you know, this type of roof, this type of siding, because, you know, it's not one-size-fits-all. And finally, I wanted to emphasize that reuse is a really hot topic. They were talking about it and people were asking questions in the chat room. And many municipalities are trending toward more flexibility, particularly with residential structures. So I think, you know, Placerville's on the right track. We realize that we only have so much housing stock. We've got to keep it available and livable. So, anyway, those are just things, I think, I just wanted to reassure you. It sounds like, as I said, we're on the right track, but, you know, we, we still have to move forward with any changes or, and just, you know, use our, our experience and our, our best judgment as projects come before us for our consideration. So if this comes back around, I, I recommend it. It was interesting. Just, just the range of case studies, I think, just really educational.
Who did you say put it on?
They're called the California Preservation Foundation. And it was SOI Boot Camp. Secretary of Interior Standards Boot Camp.
Preservation Foundation, you said?
California Preservation Foundation. One case study, I don't know if you have been down on the waterfront. It's on the Sacramento River. So it's across from the Zagarat upstream of Rayleigh Field. But it's, the city took over a PG&E building and a water intake. And the PG&E building is, so you're shaking. I looked at that, I said, oh my goodness, that, that is just a mess. And most of the people that were evaluating the case study agreed, you know, we all agreed. The application, you know, yeah, there's the old structure, but in no way is, is the new, I think it's a discovery museum. So that is just ultra-modern. And it was, yeah, it was overwhelming. I think they did a poll and well over three-quarters of the people attending said that, that the standards weren't applied appropriately in that example. So that, that was one of the case studies that's actually close to us, most of them. Washington DC, Southern California, things that we couldn't observe. But this is not too far from the confluence of the American, the Sacramento. So if you're down there and want to take a few minutes to kind of look at it and see what they did, big, big redevelopment, very expensive project. And, anyway.
Thank you. That's interesting and valuable.
Thanks for listening. I appreciate your indulgence.
I have a, just a couple of things to, I'd like to bring forward. We had a Christmas parade this weekend, another fantastic event. And I think it's one of the things that just demonstrates what I. the things that just demonstrates what a, what a great community that we have. Some concerns were brought to my attention, though, because people get there early and, you know, to, to, to sit and watch and observe, and they got their kids, it got fairly crowded on the streets with traffic still traveling before it was shut down. And so maybe we can bring this to the police department's attention from a safety perspective and see if there might be something else we can do to mitigate the possibility of somebody getting hurt and, and how it might be managed. So, passing that along. The next public hearing or a community meeting for the public art project is December 11, this is coming Monday, I believe at 5:30. Is that right, correct? Five, 5:30? And is it, and it's, where, do you know the location offhand? It's right here in this building. Okay. At 5:30. So this is a, this is another opportunity for the public to, to weigh in on, on the public art plan. I was in Grass Valley a week ago tonight for a folk band concert and they have a, kind of a center mall off, it's perpendicular to kind of the main street, which isn't called Main Street, but whatever, the road is, runs in front there, I can't remember the name of it, even though the concert hall is right there. But off, off the side, they have beautiful, beautifully decorated, lit up, almost mall-like, walkway, open-air mall kind of thing. It was really, really attractive. If you have an opportunity to get up there, I would recommend that you take a look. Off the wire today in Truckee, the Board, Placer County Board of Supervisors approved the forwarding of an application for a mural or a pair of murals on Caltrans-owned, overcrossed bridges along the park. And I immediately thought of the Mosquito Road Bridge, which Caltrans had said they weren't going to allow because, you know, possibility of cracks and repairs or whatnot, but Placer County Board of Supervisors apparently is, is going forward and applying to Caltrans. So I'm just suggesting that maybe we keep an eye on how that application process goes and what Caltrans does with that. Pierre, I see you're pulling your microphone forward.
Yes, and I can certainly address a couple of the points you've made, if you, if, if you've completed your report.
Let's see, the last one, Grass Valley, Christmas parade. And then, just, you know, the, the, the whole discussion we've had this evening, tangential discussion about, you know, how we, we can support businesses and, you know, I never was a fan of the A-frame restrictions when it came out in the sign ordinance when I was very early commissioner. I'm still not a fan of the A-frame restrictions and we haven't had much of an issue with them and we kind of relaxed those standards when the last time the business climate was poor. And the business climate is, man, it's, it's just been a challenge these past eight, nine years from one thing to another. And I, I think we really need to be careful. I would ask us to exercise caution and introspection when we, to be too quick to, to jump, and I'm not speaking necessarily here, but even at the council level about putting, you know, what seemed to be really nice controls on business because it, it's brutal. So, anyway, those, those are my comments.
So I will, I will start at, at the end and go backwards. So in regards to the A-board signs on, on the city right-of-way, the sidewalk, so our ordinance currently prohibits them completely, but in the past, staff has sort of, let's just say, looked the other way because of, you know, because of COVID and, and the restrictions. So we relaxed a lot of different things to allow great flexibility for businesses to be able to prosper during the restrictions.
Even during the recession.
And during the recession as well.
Because right after the pass out ordinance and the recession hit, and, you know, 2008, you know, or so, yeah.
But I would just encourage us, on that note, well, 2008, well, yeah, I would just add that staff is going to have a presentation that we're going to give to the city council and get direction from them. So the first question we would ask the council is, do you want to allow A-boards or not? Because they could just direct staff then to enforce the code and then that's the end of it. But if they wish that we allow A-boards, well then that opens a gamut of how they restrict them in terms of materials, in terms of size, placement up against the building, do we allow them up in the curb, do we allow them in the middle of the sidewalk, like a lot of them are? Do we allow just one A-board per business as opposed to multiple, as you can see? They've really proliferated so, in a lot of situations, because we're unfortunate, we don't have very wide sidewalks as some communities do. It's very narrow in, in a lot of areas and we want to ensure a minimum of five feet from the edge of that sign to the curb, nothing less. And so, you know, a lot of it will be kind of self-policing in a way if those are the kind of regulations that the council imposes, should they want to allow the A-boards. And then you got to look at, because we have multi-story buildings, so we can allow A-boards for the, for the restaurants, for the businesses, and then the, the upstairs businesses as well. So you can see a lot of extra signage. So I just want to keep that in mind, I, that should, should the council direct staff to create regulation for A-boards, we're going to create some ordinances, we're going to come back to this commission and it'll be this commission making recommendation then to the council. So I impress all of you, walk up and down and, and take notes and sort of see what you like, what you don't like. It's, it's just an opportunity to do that.
You have my commitment here to keep an open mind on, on the matter.
Here, I, I disagree. I, these A, A-board, sandwich boards are, they impede the flow. And I like walking up and down our main street and I think they've, if the city decides to have staff rewrite the ordinance, you know, just minimizing the sign, the, the size so that people can pass one another easily, yeah, yeah, take a, take a walk during peak hours.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to regulating them, I'm opposed to an outright prohibition. That's, that's what I oppose and I think our ordinance outright prohibits, and I thought that was draconian.
Yeah.
And I think, I think with a little bit more thought, a little bit more compromise, we probably could have come up with a balance that addresses the issues that Pierre and yourself, you just raised. But the outright prohibition is what I always subjected to.
So the next.
Battles begin.
Yeah. So the next item you brought up was the Mosquito Bridge mural. So I was heavily involved with that, working with the county. That was a project that was funded by a grant, I think it was a health grant, so it was through the county environmental health department. And my understanding that they went through a lot of effort working with Caltrans staff to get sort of pre-approval. I mean, if you go back into the record, you can see the level of detail in terms of the maintenance and the ownership of that mural, once it would have, once it would, would be installed on that wall. And you're right, Chair Friend, I mean, I am very, I spent a lot of time in the, in the East Bay and you can look at a lot of the freeways out there and there are murals on support structures, supporting large freeway structures. So that was a small standard somewhere in the code where they typically don't want to see murals because it'll cover cracks and they won't be able to see maybe a stress fracture or something that could be a danger to the structure. I'd be happy to talk offline as to my theory as to why it was killed at the last minute, rather than airing it here.
Well, let's, let's schedule an offline appointment for about 15 minutes.
So the next, so the previous item to that, you talked a little bit about your visit to Grass Valley. I, at the urging of Tony Wendell, he's on the Economic Advisory Committee and, you know, I had told him that I was, it was a camping trip and I was going to be going through Nevada City and Grass Valley and he told me, make sure you check out their, their blockage of the street to vehicular traffic. That was Mill Street. And I spent a lot of time there, I talked with customers, I talked with merchants. For the most part, people were in favor of that, they thought it really enhanced the business. There were some residents there that didn't like it because of course it eliminated the parking. But I agree with you, it's a beautiful mall. And anyways, yes, I took pictures and.
That, that closing of Mill Street was after COVID, so they had temporarily closed it down and I can kind of track how they were getting public comment and they went through a lot of review, a lot of public input on the design and so it was very thoughtful. And I, I think it's a really tremendous benefit to that community. And it's funny, you mentioned how it's decorated for the holidays. I happened to be up there for a concert one night, so I guess that was after Halloween, I can't remember exactly which weekend, but, so they still had jack-o'-lantern up there and, and, you know, pumpkins. The next day, it was Christmas. They, they did a turnaround and it was just unbelievable because we had gotten late, out late of the show and kind of passed by and jack-o'-lantern was still there and went out for breakfast the next day and it, it was Santa. They, you know, that is, obviously the community, the city really want to do the best they can for that pedestrian mall area that they've created.
And not to leave out Nevada City, I did visit Nevada City as well and they have temporary closures of Commercial Street. So they have bollards they're able to put up at certain times and actually block traffic on, on Commercial Street. And lo and behold, I, I looked around and there was Dietrich's Cheese. I had no idea that Dietrich's Cheese had a store in Nevada City, so, anyways. And then the item before that was a public art meeting, I will be also attending that. I want to just confirm, that is in this building on, on the 11th at 5:30. And that's it, thank you.
All right. If there's no other business, then we are adjourned at, I think it's 7:44.
7:42.
7:42. All right, and we'll see everyone on the 19th. Thank you so much. Good night.